Please call me to order, make a note that Erin Williams is on electronic and Heidi is not here yet. She'll be here shortly. Ready Doug?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Amy, you getting this? I'm looking right here, I go, where is she?
She disappeared.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, I heard six zero. Board meeting review. Chris, you want to head to the board?
Oh, I think she got it.
Hello everyone and welcome to the MSBA Board Report for the month of July. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the issue of school safety. Creating and maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for our students, teachers, and staff is always a top priority for school board members and administrators, but now has become an even greater focus in the aftermath of the horrific shooting in Uvalde, Texas. MSBA Center for Education Safety remains an important resource for school districts throughout our state, and now a new national school safety organization will be part of the Missouri School Boards Association. It will be led by John McDonald, a nationally recognized school safety expert, who reappeared as the leader of safety and security in the Jefferson County Schools in Colorado, the home of Columbine High School. McDonald, who is moving to Missouri, spoke at MSBA's recent delegate assembly meeting in St. Charles. He said school boards remain on the front lines of protecting children and providing them with a safe learning environment.
If you ask any parent what's most important to them about their child's education, they're going to tell you three things. I want my child safe, I want them happy, and I want them educated. If we do those three things, we have great hope. Not only do we have hope, but we see great results, and we know that a student feels safe in their environment. A student that feels safe at school is a better learner. They have higher test scores, better graduation rates. They want to be there and they want to learn, and every child deserves to learn in an environment free from ancient abuse and bullying and threats.
McDonald says the new national school safety organization under MSBA's umbrella will provide school districts with a variety of resources and guidance to meet the needs of individual districts. He adds, the new organization will also provide a critical incident response team that will be available to Missouri and throughout the nation. The new president of the Missouri School Boards Association is Ray Murphy, a school board member from the Richards R5 School District of K-8 schools. Murphy became MSBA's new president at the recent Igniting Great Ideas Summit in St. Charles after serving as president-elect for the past year. He told board members attending the summit, it's important to understand the challenges our schools face right now, but it's also important to celebrate accomplishments.
Oscar Wilde has a great quote, one of his favorites, he said, "Experience is the best teacher because it gives you the test and then the lesson." And we've learned a lot. It'll break that they did well. Learned from the things we didn't do good and failed at, and move forward and celebrate those.
MSBA state officers elected during the assembly meeting held at the summit who elect Ruth Johnson of the Raymore Peculiar School District and Vice President Patty Quisenberry of the Ozark School District. It's time to review and submit proposed changes to MSBA's advocacy positions. As policymakers, the public, and the media, where MSBA's hands on issues like school and many others. Be a part of this process by reviewing the current positions, discussing them with your fellow school board members, and proposing change. Kids will vote on the proposed changes at the full delegate assembly this November in Kansas City. The deadline to submit new or revised positions. Recreation is now open for the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators to be held November 4th and 5th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a great lineup of general session speakers. You can also register to attend 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit to be held November 2nd and 3rd in Kansas City. This event is designed to provide information for those who govern and work in K-12 schools, colleges, and universities, as well as law enforcement officials and others working within those districts. The summit is being held just before the MSBA Annual Conference to allow entire safety teams, including school board members, superintendents, and central office staff, to attend with school safety staff. The Midwest School Safety Summit is presented as a partnership between MSBA Center for Education Safety and the Safe and Sound Schools Organization. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long, Rob Columbine.
Hey Andrew, does anybody have time for public comments?
But the, no, no.
Okay.
F what? Just FYI.
I forgot an agenda item here.
Okay, go ahead.
So the MSBA, I jumped, I apologize. The MSBA Igniting Great Ideas Summit is next on the agenda. So, Michael, we'll start with you. I think you were there, right?
Austin, I said much to you, I can't believe you got me. I'm so fit. I really talked to you. No, I thought it was really good. All the breakout sessions I attended were, you know, I think they were spot on and kind of where we're wanting to go, and I think certainly in our board goals. So I thought it was a good event, it was well worth the attendance for sure. Even though Austin forgot me.
Mary?
Ditto. I enjoyed all of the sessions. I felt like I learned a lot. I was going to tell you what sessions I went to, but I can't find those. But, you know, I went to the one with the snapshot of the education bills that they discussed last year and what to expect for this coming year. Some about charter schools. I went to the board director's meeting where I was again voted to represent middle school, middle range schools. Executive board, so I remain in that position. I think that's about it. It was, I thought it was very worthwhile to go and appreciated the chance to get to go.
Yeah, ditto. Really good breakout sessions. One of the scariest ones was about the big money and making big money in private education, especially the charter schools and the possibility of online charter schools. Some big money people in there. Another one that I went to-
Anyone wants to see that?
Yeah, I got that too, if anybody wants to see it. The, another one that I went to that was, the first part of it wasn't really great, but the last part was about teacher retention. And so of course in the last five minutes, you know, the stuff I really wanted to listen to happened. But they talked about some special things they were doing. One of them was a teacher advisory board that talked to the school board. Another one was a student advisory board. They talked about having each school be assigned a board member that was sort of like a liaison or something for their school to get involved with it. And then a couple of the other things were things that we were already doing.
So I know that one of the Warren County Elementary Board of Education candidates ran on that platform about assigning a board member to each of the schools. You know, the question I asked her is, well, obviously the high profile one is the high school.
Right.
So how do you decide who gets to high school and who gets to middle school and all that?
Yeah, I just thought it was an interesting idea that I hadn't thought about.
Because she and I talked about that at Greatland when we were up there at Lincoln County. We were up there for that, and, you know, and her response to me was, well, you might just have to do rock paper scissors. I said, I don't know about that. But yeah, so she and I did talk about that a little bit.
And then we had awards. Michael got both his Masters in Advanced, right? And then we got, our whole school board got the Governance Team Award, which is basically has to do with our doing professional development and being involved not only with our own school board, but some of us at least being involved at a regional and an escape level. We get to put that up with our other ones.
I haven't hung soon. Thanks for your time, for sure. So I'll just comment on two things. I went to the, one about public engagement, and we talked about that a little bit, and we'll talk about that a little bit more tonight. And the other one was CSEP development. And basically Afton and Park Hill presented. Afton, when they presented, they presented how they outsourced it. So they basically hired a facilitator, and then that facilitator came in and facilitated all the community meetings and stuff like that. And she kind of outlayed, you know, why that worked for Afton. And then Park Hill indicated, well, what they did was they handled it internally. And basically, you know, they both did the same thing. They just both offered different, you know, aspects as to why it worked internally versus hiring somebody to do the facilitator. The big thing about the facilitator, which I liked, was the facilitator presented some objectivity. In other words, I'm going to pick on Doug here, sorry. But let's say Doug, you know, Doug has a, let's say he has a pet project. And so as he's doing it, as he's facilitating the CSEP, you know, there could be some, you know, is that weed its way in or whatever? I'm not saying he would do that, I'm just, as an example. Whereas if you have the external facilitator, you know, you don't get that because basically they're objective, they don't, you know, they don't have any skin in the game in terms of, you know, what, at the end of the day, what's in the CSEP is all based upon what the school district and the patrons and all that say. So, you know, he and I have talked about it a little bit, and, you know, so that's something what we're going to be doing in the fall here is looking at our CSEP. And so that's kind of something we can discuss, you know, later on this year. Anyway, that was, to me, that was, and that was at the president's board workshop was where I heard all this. It was, it was interesting. It was an interesting conversation, so. Other than that, anybody want to bring anything else about the Igniting Great Ideas Summit? Okay.
There was something I wanted to just-
Go.
The MSEP report, I mean, the MSBA report.
Yes.
Brett Gann, I just want FYI that he is retiring. We'll be seeing a new face.
We'll miss him.
Yeah.
Been around a long time. Does a good job.
Yeah.
Hey, we moved back to community director for Republican Relations.
Oh, yeah. He can do a great deal with that first, huh?
Okay.
That's his plan.
Okay, the next thing that's in the agenda is the end of year building reports in lieu of the CSEP reports. And you all have had a chance to look at them. Does anybody have any questions regarding the high school one? Middle school? West? East? Special education? I noticed that our administrators are on vacation today. And we have, then I think the bigger one is the bully, cyberbully report. Chris, you want to kind of just go through that one real quick?
Yeah, well, I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Smith, who, but, we inserted this in there because I know, you know, video appears pretty frequently around the state about bullying incidents, and that gets a lot of attention from people, from folks. I know we've had some frustration even in our community in terms of whenever this one is assigned and whether it has bullying in there, whether it meets the legal definition. I think the board has some working knowledge of that, but we thought that'd be a good idea to put together a quick presentation. Mr. Smith has done so. So he'll kick that out, build some questions for the board.
So anyway, you're going to roll that for me when you get a chance. Thank you, so. So again, as you saw in our end of the year building reports, all of the different administrators did compile and put in their bullying data, the number of reports that they took, and then the number of those that they substantiated, and the ones that were not substantiated, so that's in there. So we did feel like, like Dr. Bursch said, this is a good time to just bring everyone up to speed on what we do with that and how we handle those in our district. Again, by state statute, every Missouri school district has to have an anti-bullying policy. We do. Ours is JFCF. In that, districts are required to create a procedure for reporting. We have a bullying report form that was given to us by our legal team that we use. It is available in offices, and you can download that online and fill that out through our website. So we made that available multiple ways. We're required to train people in bullying and reporting suspected bullying. We do that through our annual trainings every year. Designate individuals with buildings to receive bullying reports and conduct investigations. Our counselors and administrators can receive those reports, and our administrators have been trained to conduct those investigations. We're required to initiate investigation or report within two school days. We do so to complete the investigation within 10 days. We do so to provide education to victims. That's a big role of our counselors in these situations. And then we have to have a district compliance officer. Our district compliance officer is Dr. Way. And he is the person, and I'll talk a little more about his role with that in a moment. So you've probably seen this before, this is actually the legal definition of bullying. It's both from policy JFCF, and it's aligned to the state statute on this. So our policy aligns tightly with what the state of Missouri defines bullying as. And so I know that in the past, we've had situations where we're trying to utilize the state statute. And we have some students or families who may not necessarily agree with this, but we're going off of this. So if you go to the next slide, this is really, I think, the crux of this. And this is what a lot of our professional development as administrators is centered on when we bring in, you know, our legal team with the lawyers to do some training, or when our administrators go to training at conferences. Well, in bullying, there is this three-pronged approach to determine bullying has occurred. And so we really look at each of these three things when a report comes in. Some of this information also comes from the federal government's definitions, and you can find those, and I've included that web link there. But what we're really looking at, I'm going to go back up there again, Amy, real quick, I'm going to go through those three. The widely accepted three-pronged approach we're looking at is, is this intentional? Is the person who is thought to be a bully doing this intentionally? Is it purposeful? Not Michael walking up to me in the hallway and accidentally bumping me and knocking me into the locker? Would not be intentional, but walking all the way across the hall to plow into me and make me fling my books would be. Is this repeated or based on conversations or investigations likely to be repeated? Bullying is a pattern and not isolated incidents? And there's- So time out there for a second. So let's say that take that first thing, where I walk across the hall and purposely push you into the locker. Now, and that in itself isn't necessarily bullying unless some other, or is that bullying? Or does they have to have a repeated construct to it as well, or likely to be repeated? It would have to, yeah, we're looking for all three of these things. So all three of those things have to be true before it's bullying? Now-
But it could be something else.
It's something else, I gave up, I pushed you, I mean, that's assault. That could be assault, sure. And I'll get to that in one of those slides. Because that's how it's actually bullying. Right. Okay, yeah. So we're looking for all three prongs of this. Okay. Before we categorize something or we say that bullying is substantiated. So we're trying to hit all three of these prongs. And that there is some type of power imbalance here, like social pressure, social power imbalance, physical, or one person has access to information that chooses to coerce or do other things with someone else. And again, these are the three things that we really look through or look for in our investigations to determine whether or not bullying occurred. And each of these three things are needed for a bullying claim to be substantiated. All right, now we go to the next one. So we want to talk just a little bit about some of the things we do preventatively upfront on the bullying front that are part of state statute and part of just what we do. Our policy and consequences for bullying, they're published in all handbooks. You can access those. Parents and families have access to those handbooks and sign off beginning of the year that they have received it, that they have looked at it and know what's in it. Again, all district employees receive annual bullying training, what to do when they suspect it, how to go about it. Our secondary counselors, and this is kind of getting to what you were saying, Austin, provide guidance lessons on bullying to students. And so I would think that most of our kids who are in middle school and high school can probably tell you that they have been through a mean, rude, or bullying presentation. There's a difference between those three things. Someone is being mean to you, what does that look like? That may be an offense in our code of conduct, but it may not be bullying. Someone could be being very rude to you, it may not be bullying. And what is bullying? And there are scenarios within those trainings. So our secondary students receive guidance lessons in that. Our elementary counselors on that instructional wheel provide instruction during specials, and in that time, there's some bullying prevention, and that's part of the Ruler program. So our students are getting that. Okay, continue, Amy. If a report is filed-
Aaron's got a question. He's got a question. Sorry, I was just wondering, so I know we do ruler in elementary, and obviously our discipline reports have plummeted, and what does that look like in our secondary schools? I mean, is there, it seems like ruler is pretty intense training. Is there an appetite for that in our secondary schools? Or is that something that's just elementary-based? Is that being implemented in kind of that ruler way now that, now that our current middle schoolers and maybe some high schoolers are kind of used to that, that ruler model?
We hope that they're used to that mindset a little bit, and that that permeates up. We've looked into it a little bit at the secondary, a lot of that is, deals a lot with some of the behavior management stuff, and we tried to address some of that with our recent policy change and taking a look at how we do our student discipline in terms of restorative practices, which are a big part of the Ruler initiative. And so to kind of answer your question, Erin, are we specifically right now bringing ruler into our secondary schools in terms of training our teachers and administrators? No. Our facets of that include in our new discipline policy, of course. Have students received now three or four years of that going through elementary school? And then it's permeating through? Yes. I think we're starting to see some effects of that into middle school. If you look at some of the declining discipline numbers over the past four, about three or four years there too.
Thank you.
So just a little bit about bullying reporting and investigation of discipline. Walk through that process with you real quickly. A student, a parent, a guardian, a peer, or a teacher files a bullying report if they suspect that or that they believe that there is a bullying report there. The counselors or principals, like I said before, can't take those forms. The bullying administrators have two days to begin an investigation. And as part of that, we notify the person or the group or whoever the filing party was that yes, we have started the investigation. So that filing party is notified that the investigation has begun. We have the administrator conduct a thorough investigation. They determine whether the bullying report was substantiated or unsubstantiated. And that's the terminology that we use based on interviews, watching videos, and just looking at all the evidence, taking statements. Once the administrator has made an early determination, shares that information and all the evidence and the initial conclusion with Dr. Way. So before we make any decisions on, yes, this was bullying, no, this was not bullying, our district bullying coordinator looks over that with the principal, talks through it. Dr. Way reviews that evidence and the notes with the administrator and share compliance. And then the determination, and only the determination is shared with the reporting party. So the reporting party would hear the complaint of bullying was substantiated or unsubstantiated. And we obviously can go no further than that because then that gets into private confidential records. So if that is substantiated, the administrator obviously assigns a discipline consequence for bullying based on what our handbook and policy say. Those consequences are not shared with the reporting party. But you do know that bullying is a class C offense. That means that law enforcement, in our case, the resource officer would be contacted and notified, okay, automatically. Now, if the bullying is unsubstantiated, a discipline consequence may still be required. Like you had said earlier, Austin, in the example that we give, Michael comes across the hall and intentionally slams into me and knocks me into the locker. He has never done so before, never had any real interaction with me, was just trying to have a little fun at my expense. Didn't tell anyone that he's going to do that again, he's not made any comments that he's going to pick on me. Really not a power imbalance in any way socially, it was just something he did for the moment on the whim. If I filed a bullying report, that would be unsubstantiated. That doesn't mean that Michael isn't getting a discipline consequence for assault. He may, but if I was the reporting party, I would hear that the claim of bullying was unsubstantiated. It does not mean that there's not something there that occurred. And I think that's an important distinction that we need to make. That just because a report's unsubstantiated does not mean that there wasn't an infraction against our code of conduct. Any questions? Erin, any more questions?
No, thank you.
I have no additional questions. I asked mine during the presentation. Alice?
No, I think it is important to note that, you know, the reporting party doesn't get detailed information on the result. And the reason for that is because of confidentiality issues.
Mike, this?
No, I have nothing.
I have no question. Thank you, Doug. Very good information.
Okay. Now, Chris, do you want to address anything else in the CSEP reports that, anything else you think needs to be called out?
No, thank you.
Okay. So next one on the thing is study group, evidence-based instruction and assessment. And I think that's called to Doug?
It is.
All right, take a deep breath and inhale a little more. All right, so this, I'm just going to provide an update on our evidence-based study group. Obviously, we had hoped before the end of the year to bring a recommendation to the board. That did not happen. I'm going to try to pretty much explain why and what's going on with this and the fact that we are certainly put this on pause, but it is not over. So just a little background of this study group. This was charged by the Board of Education back in September. You tasked us with determining whether our secondary schools should go to an evidence-based instruction assessment and grading model. Currently, right now, our elementary's K-25 are standards-based grading and reporting, which is in some ways synonymous with evidence-based. And so we are currently doing that. So do we want to take that process for some variation or form of that and move that into our secondary schools? And so that was our task. We had, that group met three times so far. We're going to meet some more, but we have met three times so far. We met on February the 9th, March the 2nd, and April the 6th. Each one of those meetings had a few things. There was some type of presentation that occurred about a topic related to this. We almost always did some type of group activity. We were looking at data, we were looking at information, we were looking at scenarios. And then there was a format used to gather feedback from the group. At the conclusion of those meetings, I collected all the feedback, correlated that into a form, and I shared that back out with the group. A lot of times, I would get follow-up emails from members of the group and would address those, and we would address those at the beginning of the next meeting. those, and we would address those at the beginning of the next meeting. We had about 30 people who attended meetings of this group. And I can tell you, it was, we had students on that, we had parents, families, board members, administrators, teachers, a pretty good cross-section of people. We had people who came into that group very doubtful of the idea of this. We had people who came in here gung-ho for it from the beginning. So I think the group was a pretty good representative of a lot of different factions of what people believe. So I want to give you just a really brief overview of what each of the three meetings was, and then I'll come back and give you a little more information about each one in depth. That February ninth meeting, we really talked about the need for an evidence-based grading approach. That came more from the administrative team, why we felt that that was a need, and why we felt that really the systems used at the middle school and high school right now are a little inequitable and may not be giving us accurate information. I'll get into that a little more in a minute. March second, we really talked through the Missouri Learning Standards, how we access those, how we should be using those to drive our instruction, and then our assessments should align with those. And then Mrs. Hickman presented on what our elementaries are doing in terms of standards-based grading now, what that looks like, K-5. Part of our feedback for that evening was, would this work 612? Would this K-5 model work 612? I'll tell you, based on some of the feedback I got there, or April sixth, you know, or March second, some of the feedback was, this is great for elementary, maybe middle, but really at high school level, it's not a, this is not a really good model. So in the interim between March second and April sixth, I attended a conference with Mr. Wallace and Mr. Brooks at Chicago, the SCD Conference. I went to a session on evidence-based grading in a secondary high school. They presented a model. I brought that model back, presented that to the group. And then presented some different variations of that to the group. We took a look at that. We talked about some research-based practices, ideas. We watched the MSBA board report about the DESI-based group that is doing some work with competency-based, identifying some of the difference between competency-based and evidence-based at the moment. And then went on from there. So February ninth, we really talked about, and this was more of a presentation from myself and another administrator, but we also looked at some grade reports, that some of our current grading practices are not really accurate. And then a lot of student grades are impacted by behaviors. In fact, one of the things we did at that meeting was we looked at three grading reports where students had gotten the exact same grade in three entirely different ways. And one of the questions posed there was, if this person were to come in and work for you, doing what the core of the class would, would you equally want all of those students coming to work for you based on their grade? And kind of universally, the consensus was no, because some of those grades were based on things that weren't necessarily just evidence that I can do, do the skill or complete the skill. And we have some student grades based on grades impacted by behaviors. Like I just said, you know, not all student grades mean the same thing in different contexts. Student grades are largely not accurate predictors of success on standards-based assessments. And we got a lot of student data that support that in our, in our school district. We want to work on that. We were concerned, the group, well, like the census with the students are getting a lot behind based on accurate grades. And so one of the bigger issues for us, I think, is that if we are determining grades based on like perhaps behavior, I'm completing all of my work, I may or may not have understanding of it, someone may be helping me with it, but I'm getting a score based on that. I'm a compliant student that do everything I'm asked to do in class, there are points for that. My grade is inflated or perhaps higher because I am a good student, then as an instructor, I may not be able to find out what deficiencies that student has in learning because the grade's impacted by other factors and then we're not able to intervene accurately for that student. And so we really want those to be accurate. The current grading system with a hundred-point system creates like 59 levels of failure. You want A is 10 points, B is 10 points, C is 10 points, D is 10 points, but that's 59. And what do each of those 59 levels mean? And then the group expressed the need for grades to be more accurate. You know, I know that there were, you know, in that initial meeting, we did have at least one of our members express the desire to continue to have some of those behaviors impacting grades because that member felt that helped motivate students to complete work. If you go simply by performance and motivation to complete some of the work may be lost. I know that was part of our discussion. Our March second meeting, the consensus and the feedback is, so when I say the consensus, so I give feedback forms at each of these and give people an opportunity to write things. And everyone had, everyone turns those in. And when I say consensus, like the majority of people were writing some variation of this. So I may have gotten, you know, 30 pieces of feedback, but these are things that almost everyone or a majority of the people put some aspect of this. That evidence-based grading provides better information for parents and families. I think that's one of the big keys to this, that people liked. Instead of your kid coming home and you looking at the grade card that's saying, Heidi got seven out of 10 on quiz number three. I have no idea what quiz number three is, or what seven out of 10 was, or whatever. But if Heidi scored a four out of four, four no means understands that on solving equations with one variable. I, as a parent, now have information about what my kid is learning and have a little clearer picture of that because it's based on the standard instead of something else. So the evidence-based grading provides better information for parents and families about where their students are learning and progression. Like we talked about earlier, a better ability for teachers to know what students know and then act on it, do something with that information. If we were to do something like this, we would have a consistent approach to teaching, learning, grading K-12 instead of, I'm in the standards-based world, K-5, and now 612, I suddenly move into an entirely different system that I'm not used to. There was a big consensus that yes, secondary teachers would have to change practice and we need a lot of, you know, professional development to prepare for this. The biggest, like I said, detriment of the biggest thing that the committee felt like taking the approach that we do K-5 to the high school, and this was, you know, high school, we had high school admin, teachers, similar people in there, that there still needs to be this idea of a GPA and class rank for the purposes of admissions in colleges and that going to a system where you just get a letter voids that out and that the instruction stays focused on standards. Our consensus feedback then for the April sixth one, the blended grading model that I presented that another school was using was widely supported, detailed and simple, and imperative friendly, and instead it moves from a hundred-point model to a four-point model. When everything is out of four points, like we see on MAP, Advanced, Fisher, is it low basic? I mean, you don't complete it, there is still this idea that if I don't do the work, I don't get a point, I can get the zero. So the motivation to do that work, but there's not big gaps for not doing it. Fifty-nine points, everything is scaled accordingly. There were some concerns that would teachers use that consistently? Again, that would be a professional development thing. Consensus that this would focus all grading, reporting, scoring, learning on targeted priority standards. The model that I produced is that the priority standards are what is in the grade book and that you have assessments of those, and that's all that gets put in the grade book throughout the year. Four, three, two, one, zeros to the standards and only to the standards, and that's what your grade is based on. And then we talked a little bit, and at that point, the competency-based group that DESI has created, their work group, had not put out any of their information at that point, what direction they were going and some of the things that they were seeking to do. So we thought we wanted to really take a look at maybe what some of their information is, wait and see what some of our data showed from the assessments that we were good ready to take then, the MAP-EOC assessments. We already looked at the trends of our elementary school and our, the more that they have invested in that standards-based work and how academic performance has gone up greatly. And we've done through that and wanted to see some more evidence of that. So we put a pause on that, definitely not a stopping point. I do want to just touch on this because we've used some of these terms, this idea of evidence-based versus competency-based. Want to make sure that we're kind of familiar with that. You know, evidence-based, and I can use that and standards-based a little bit synonymously. Competency-based means something different, especially when you talk about this work group that the state is putting out. First of all, in yellow are four things that kind of have in common. That assessments generate data that are tied directly to the standards. So our assessments give us data whether students are learning or not. That our grade reports relay evidence of student mastery of standards. So any other factors, okay, always do your work, always show up on time. Bring your pencil, you go prepare, you're doing your homework, you're doing your assignments. Behavior factors are weighed separately or maybe even in a separate grade from, from the academic portion of that. The data informs next steps of instruction. So that we should be using our data or assessments as a checkup ongoing, like you're a doctor and you get looked at and it's a checkup rather than when something's wrong, all of a sudden trying to fix it. Or ongoing assessment tied to standards so that we can react to it rather than waiting until the end and then trying to fix things. And that there's very common expectations for what student mastery looks like. The evidence-based system or standards-based paces students through very low expectations. So that typically, we would maintain a lot of the same grade levels that we have now. And students at each grade level would take their grade level assessments, fifth grade, take the fifth grade, grade level assessments, and we stay with their grade level cohort. We might try to differentiate it and give them some more experiences or accelerate their learning a little bit, but essentially, they're staying on grade level. The competency-based model that's being presented by the work group to the state would eliminate grade levels, would eliminate seat time, and would simply go with student moves when they've mastered the content.
So on that competency-based, what I understood, so in our evidence-based, the fifth graders at the same age would stay together, on a competency-based, you could have third, fourth, and fifth graders in the same room.
Sure.
Are the kids at that age?
Yes.
So they would no longer be third, fourth, or fifth graders?
Well, so you're just, as you master content, you move on. And then when you've mastered that content, when you've mastered those standards at a certain level, that's when you take the state assessment.
Now, the question is, is that what, with AM66 and all that, is that what they're going to go to in terms of when we give those assessments? Or, and then are we going to be out of sync if we go evidence-based versus competency-based?
I don't believe so. I believe, but that, you know, again, so they have presented their findings, and I've got a slide here, you know, that evidence-based group didn't present their findings at the state level. And, you know, I want to present those, but there were no decisions that were made at that time based on that. And Dr. Berger and I have already kind of looked through that presentation and thought through some of those ramifications, but I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
And again, I just, I did want to pull up one of their slides, which is this next one, just to kind of talk through, this is one of the slides that they didn't present, that they had in there. If you look at that fourth one down, students progress based on evidence and mastery, not seat time. So that is, you know, something that they are pushing. Again, most of the other stuff are things that I've covered in there. Feel free to look over that at your time too. But again, you know, the big one for us that we want to make sure that we're doing, and I think we really started doing that at our elementaries with our standards-based system, is that third bullet down, students receive timely differentiated support based on learning needs. They're taking assessments at an ongoing level. And then we are, that's what their score is based on, not other things. And that we're working on addressing those needs. The next slide. So we...
So before you go on, and I don't need an answer tonight, but go back to the previous slide. So I think one of the things that we need to talk about as we go forward is the summer loss of learning. Let's say, you know, in May, I exhibit mastery of something, and I go on summer break, and then I come back in the fall, you know, there's some regression that occurs. So I'd be curious as, as we go through this, and what your thoughts are going to be on how we handle that situation.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yeah, that'll be one we'll address. Then the last part of this, you know, where do we go from here? You know, my goal is, is as soon as we get our MAP-EOC data and results back, I want to reconvene this group and use that information as well as some of the competency-based work group findings to select the direction for our school district and our secondary schools. And if they decide that they, if the group decides that it wants to move on with an evidence-based plan at the secondary levels, I'd like to create a timeline, implementation of that, when we would go to that and what that would look like. And then our goal would be to make a recommendation to the board sometime in the winter. Questions coming, concerns? I ask my questions after the presentation, Alice?
No, I'm okay. It would be interesting to see what comes forward.
Okay.
I agree.
Mary?
Well, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it because it's so different than what we're, I wouldn't say the norm, but what we're used to.
Yes.
But, you know, after being at home with my granddaughter, she was doing virtual school in the math, that's totally not what we're used to. So, you know, I have to trust the trained professionals looking into this.
I want to see what y'all come back with. Very, yeah. I can't wait to see what comes back. I mean, I get it, to improve, we have to change, but whoop, that's a big one.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to, I think there's, I think there's room for a hybrid model.
Yeah, I do too. And that's why I want to see what they come back with, because if they don't even touch on that from the state level, I'm kind of worried about the whole...
Well, I'm worried about how they're going to do the assessments and, you know, my question and then regression. Michael?
I'm excited. I think we have to continue to innovate, find new opportunities. So I'm really curious to see the data, as far as, I'm a data person, so I think data is typically lies. I think if we see progress in our elementary students, then I think, you know, we certainly need to take a hard look and determine if this is a good model for all our secondary schools as well. But, you know, cautiously as well as, you know, group floor, I have my reservations as well because it's an entirely new model. But we also don't want to get left behind. You know, I think we want to prepare our students for what life looks like after high school. So, and we're the only school that doesn't implement something different because we're afraid to do it.
Erin?
I'm really excited about it. I went in, not a fan of the three-page report cards that I get from my elementary students, but I do have a better graph on what the information is, what areas that she's doing great in, what areas she's not doing great in. I think it's all really good information. The information that was presented was so interesting and the actual data behind it was so interesting. And as Doug had mentioned in, you know, one of the meetings, West Elementary has been doing this, and you can see, we all know what West Elementary has done in our, in our math scores. And, you know, I think it's just, it takes away all of that other stuff of, is this a good kid? I shouldn't say good kid, all kids are good, but, you know, is this a kid that has good work, learning habits, or whatever it may be? Is this a kid that, you know, teachers may like more than others? Doug gave some great stories. And it just takes all of that away and really focuses on the evidence of knowing the information. And I'm really excited about it. I think it's where, I went to a presentation at MSBA when we were there last fall. I think it's where, I, I went to a presentation at MSBA when we were there last fall, and the room was packed with schools that are investigating this more and more. So looking forward to meeting again next fall.
So the one thing I heard from what Erin's saying is, I think there is a, there's going to have to be some parent PD, you know, because like she said about the three-page report card and stuff like that, you know? But the good news is, I mean, the parents are getting that now because they're getting them. But I wonder if there would be some additional parent PD that we'll have to think about anyway.
Thank you, yeah, we'll be communicating. Sure.
How much PD do you think it'll take to get the teachers in line with this?
I, I think that will depend on, I mean, I think that just depends on a lot of factors. You know, I think in some areas of our secondary schools right now, I think there are people who are engaged in some of this work and already going down this train. So that told the story. I mean, I as a teacher started doing this twelve, thirteen years ago and during my teaching career and adapted to it, but other people are going to be slower to it. But I, I think, you know, if we can get something done by December, I mean, we can start really doing some work in the spring on this, maybe throughout next summer and, you know, there are some people who provided some feedback, I didn't put it up there because it wasn't necessarily consensus feedback. But there were people who would have loved to have seen us start just scaling it up, you know, not making this like six, 12 all at once, but as we start moving kids into middle school, start with like sixth and seventh grade and just start a scale-in approach to this until it is widespread, and then that way you can target groups of teachers a little more specifically with festival developments to the whole staff. That'll be something that we would have to, you know, wrestle with. I think that's the committee as part of our timeline. You know, I know that that was brought up in one of our meetings and it was a discussion point.
Well, the good thing about that is if you do scaling, then the kids, you know, you can move a cohort through it and then slowly, you know, and then you're concentrated.
And that kind of negates your parent PD.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, go ahead.
No, this is kind of completely off what I just asked, but then, you know, is there any universities doing this?
That's what I was going to ask.
It's pretty much university...
Standard.
Yeah, standard and that was based.
No. So then...
One through four.
One through four.
No, not one through four.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we could wait.
Okay.
But, I mean, you don't, in, in university, you don't give grades for showing up.
No, you're right, or because you're my favorite kid.
You would get the grade because you completed this project and you did it a very, very, very well or...
And to touch on that four-point thing, Dave, a little bit, I mean, what we would look at is, you know, currently, right now, people understand a four-point scale. You know, I mean, people understand, oh, four-point O is like an A, you know, a three is a B, and so we could equate like those four points. You know, that blended model that I presented does that, you know, it creates that four-point scale, everything's on a four-point scale, which is, still provides you a GPA point.
That was going to...
That would provide you a GPA point, that could still be then where you get your class rank. If I were to ponder to fours on all of my assessments, then that's likely what my grade would be in that class.
Yeah, but we talked about though with the honors classes and stuff, you might have to go to a five-point scale.
So that'll be again...
I'm really interested to see how that piece looks from perspective of the high schoolers. I mean, your high achievers, I would want the, yeah. But then I'm really excited for your kids that don't give a crap about coming to school but know everything too, so it's, it's a, whoa!
It's a transition.
And so, yeah, that, that's, again, that's one of the things that we certainly talked about.
Yeah, that's a lot. I will be really interested to see what, what they're saying and then also what you guys come up with.
Dave, is there anything else you want to add?
No.
All right, Erin, anything else before we move on?
No, thank you.
All right, anybody else before we move on? Okay, the next one on the agenda is, we're in governance. So, Dr. Berger, board goals.
Thank you, and before I enter this and just kind of talk through this, and this is not a decision point tonight, it's kind of a pulse check, but we rupture, we had a fire hydrant rupture part of our activities today, last day of summer school, they closed the valve maybe too tight and had a, had a rupture back behind it. And we have a fire alarm going off at Wright City Middle School right now. I don't think the fire department will show up since it's not occupied, but they might, they might be required to. So if we hear sirens or something, we're, we're good. It's not, the building is not occupied, but want to give you a heads up and they're not coming here. So, also, don't drink the water. They are flushing it out, and I hope I got to you before you got, oh, you got that kind of bottled water, okay. I'll get back to the, to the agenda and thank you, I just didn't want you to hear the sirens and get all legally on me. So, you know, just to kind of broadly address this is, the, the board has board goals and that, you know, I recognized that as I came in, and that isn't completely exclusive to Wright City, but is a little bit different, you know? And, and then I also noted that, that the board goals were oftentimes really district goals, and you can look through those really quickly and see that. And, you know, I, kind of on the list to do, maybe through some workshop setting or through some development, and, and was that, you know, was there, was there, if, in a best practice calls for us to be driven by our school, our comprehensive school improvement plan, as I mentioned several times tonight, our CSEP. And whatever, so talking about the board goals, which are kind of different, and, and, you know, that's what we do at Wright City, and that's fine. And then if you looked at our CSEP as an outside looking in, you would know that it was very, very streamlined. It only addressed student achievement, academic performance, that's it. So you can do your own research on this, you can Google whatever school, and typically their comprehensive school improvement plan is easy to find, and you'll see it's really common to see school districts with a comprehensive school improvement plan that encompasses much more than student achievement. Typically, three to five categories. Now, I will tell you, during an MSEP review, that's really, you're commended if it's that streamlined because you're focused on the most important thing in the CSEP, student achievement. But real typical in there is teacher retention. Now, you'll see that more now with what's going on in Missouri and across the nation. Community engagement of some flavor, different names is very common there. Sometimes facilities, but sometimes you'll pull that out and have a complete separate facilities plan, and that's what we have. And so then, MSEP six is starting up. Now, at the best that we know, the leaders that, of the districts that are going through MSEP six this spring, Doug, right?
Correct.
Have been notified. We have not been notified, although some of our neighbors have. And so we have not been notified, so we believe that we are going through in not 22, 23, but 23, 24. But we knew CSEP, MSEP six was coming, and that calls, in, in every iteration of, of MSEP, the CSEP has played a central role. Lesser some cycles, more others, but certainly in MSEP six, the CSEP is going to play a primary role. It's going to be an artifact that you'll use in several of the standards. Now, you know, I've done some small things, like for example, what we look at, I'm so excited that Erin recognized our high-performance meeting in school, you know? That may sound like, well, yeah, she's a board member, but there are sometimes board members don't know they're high performing school, right? And so we look at that stuff every month and we wanted to connect it to what Doug had created, the CSEP, right? Doug and a committee had created as the most important thing in any CSEP, but it's really the only thing in ours, for the most part, also attendances in our CSEP. So if I'm, I'm jumping back and forth, but I thought this might be the opportunity that we have some redundancy in our current CSEP and our board goals. Also, that the board has been pretty fixated on community engagement, and that evidence of that is, you inserted a question in, in what we're going to look at tonight in the board's self-evaluation on that part. That's our, that's, if, if that is going to be one of the most important initiatives for the district is how do we get the community involved, and I know, you know, Mr. Jones reported on that last, our last board meeting with the workshop from MSEP, then it should be in our CSEP. Any educator, any leader would tell you, if it is important, it should be in your CSEP, right? There might be some, some districts, some others says, no, we're not going to do that, we're just going to stay focused on student achievement, but they're kind of fiddling because they're going to be focused on those other things in some other plan, whether it be board goals or something else. So really, this might be the opportunity to kind of streamline everything and get this into our CSEP. And the great thing about that in terms of timing is, we plan to start the CSEP, we're going to recommend is, in lieu of a study group, we'll also have evidence-based continued, but in lieu of the study group, we would go through our thorough evaluation, you know, rewrite of our CSEP this fall. That would start this fall, so probably, you know, anywhere from three to six meetings. And, and that would allow us to incorporate potentially the board goals into that CSEP. We provide that input to the CSEP committee, and I want to speak real quickly about the CSEP and, and my perception after being here two years with the district. So, and I certainly have led schools that have done a CSEP every five years, really predominantly out of MSEP compliance, you know? We're going to write this plan, we're all going to be very familiar with it, it's going to have pretty good stuff in it, and then we're going to put it on the shelf until MSEP comes, so I'll say four years, because MSEP comes in five-year cycles and then we ready the, the comprehensive school improvement plan again. And, and, you know, and sometimes we do, we make these changes that are pretty significant, you know, but they never make the CSEP. You know, even if we went through that because we think they're a great idea and we went to conferences and the board was bought in, the community was bought in, but it wasn't spawned from the CSEP, right? Well, certainly in that five years, best practice would be go back and revisit the CSEP with the full committee annually. Not six times, not four times, not three times, however many we're going to meet whenever we get the CSEP, the new CSEP off the ground, but to go back and revisit that and make a modification like, we're looking at evidence-based, let's get that in our CSEP. That's important to us. You know, the study group forum, the VAC recommendation board, let's get that, if we missed that opportunity in this, in this school year, let's make a note, and when the full comprehensive school improvement team committee meets again, let's get that inserted in. It's an opportunity to educate that, that larger group too. And so I would like, I don't believe that's how we've treated our strategic plan in our, in this district, and certainly I've been part of districts that do that. They make a living vibrant document, you know, created every five years, but every year you've got to go back in and revise it. It's typically much, you know, work and size, maybe an hour, hour and a half, and you only go into a couple of things that you think, maybe that standard changed for this, and you need to go change it. So I'd like to kind of evolve that and get the board's take on that, and, and so maybe, maybe our subtle feedback here before, yeah.
So, so here's my take on it. So first of all, you know, the decision we have to make is, basically, does our CSEP become our board goals? I think that's what Chris was trying to communicate.
Yeah, I am, but if you say decision, you know, you can mull this a little bit and when, and we can talk a little bit more about it, you can say, no, I think we'd like to look at that. So I don't think it's a decision one, because if you're uncomfortable with that...
Well, not tonight, not tonight.
Right, then, then you wouldn't, you know, that's okay, we'll do board goals. I just think that when we, when we revise board goals, because remember, a lot of the board goal stuff under academic performance was left adrift anyway. Why? We were waiting on MSEP six. Those are going to be exact, they should be exactly aligned to the CSEP. If the board goals are going to have a teacher retention, and I, and I bet they would, they already do, certainly as we expand the CSEP, that would be a priority for our district. I can tell you, like I said, we'll be competing with every other district, it's going to be in our CSEP too. Yeah, thank you.
No, no issues. So, but, so here's my thoughts on it. So the question here is, you know, typically what we do is in July, we have a workshop for board goals or whatever, and the question's going to be, you know, what, what I'm going to propose is, we just don't do that in July. Let's all think about this for a month, and then in our July board meeting, we'll, we'll put this back on the agenda, we can decide if we want to have a, a workshop early in August or whatever for board goals, if we want to continue that, or if we want to do something else and wait for the CSEP.
And you could go ahead and, if we had it on the agenda for reconsideration on what we're going to do, you know, you could decide who your three members of the board that are going to sit over the CSEP, because I think you'll want three, you know?
Well, I'm one of them.
But you can, you know, you can kind of commit that when you want to be there, because we didn't catch that when we assigned committees earlier.
Yeah.
Because we haven't done it every year.
Right.
I digress. I'm just kidding. But, not really.
It's not...
Okay, but then the other thing is, so from, so in July, we can kind of make a decision if we want to have a workshop for board goals, or do we want to more in tune do something with the CSEP and stuff like that, and we can vet that out further. So be thinking about that for the July meeting. Second, if you look at our agenda now, the way it's set up, you know, basically if you look at our board goals, this is how we set our agenda up. What would happen, I think, then is if we, based upon what we decide to do, you might see more of a traditional agenda where you have, you know, old business, new business or whatever. So we, you know, our agendas may go back to something like that. Or we are, at the same time, we need to talk about what our agendas are going to look like going forward, you know? So do we still want to keep this, you know, this...
Format.
Format of the agenda, or do we want to go, do we want to tweak it or whatever? And so, I mean, those are some decisions that we'll have to make based upon what we decide to do with board goals. Because remember, our, our, our agenda is focused on our board goals, because that makes sure we talk about it. And what Chris has, you know, been coaching me on a little bit is, you know, our board meetings should be what's in the CSEP. I mean, the majority of our board meetings should focus on what's in the CSEP. Now, we got to do the governance stuff, like the budgets and all that kind of stuff, you know? But, but you know, whatever's in our CSEP is what our, what we should be talking about in our board meetings. So, did I, you want anything else?
Yeah, just, well, yeah, and the, the secondary piece for me is the board agenda. I mean, we can operate all that same framework, but, but it may be the opportunity at least considered to change it, but that's far secondary. The, 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 putting the board goals and the CSEP together fills, and I've, I've kind hinted with the board, when we go through our board goals activity, where it's getting pretty broad, it's getting pretty big, you know? If, hey, it's kind of like our legislative platform, if you put something on, take something off, because remember, whenever MSEP six is going to come through, and I think my first MSEP cycle as a teacher was two, the first one as an administrator was MSEP three. And what they're looking for is a focused CSEP, because if it doesn't have focus, we're, we're not going to focus just that, I mean, it's going to be too broad. So we may look to pare back a little bit, you know, revisit that, and, but certainly everything that we want to be the focus needs to be in there.
It seems like the two things really should align.
They, they should.
It should. I mean, it makes sense.
They absolutely should. You know, I know Dr. Buck had told me, said, now, really, you know, your evaluation is going to be off the board goals. Well, traditionally speaking with other, with other districts, you know, and there's, every district has their own little slip, but, you know, kind of through our training, we know that the super dense evaluate off the CSEP, whether you're moving the district forward or not, you know? So it's not, it's not a very big step, and as you look at those, and I've provided those for you in the board docs, you're going to see a lot of commonality. The reason why I point out the commonality of the student performance and the academic achievement, it's the same thing.
Yeah, that's it.
And if it were different, it would be wrong.
Right.
And right now it's different, but it's just timing. You did it one, at one time and the other one ended.
Michael, you have any comments?
No, I think one guiding document is, you know, I think that's ideal. I think it does streamline and creates efficiency and it focuses all on what we should be focused on. So I, I think it's certainly something we should explore.
What he said.
When I first heard about this, and I was like, whoa, wait a minute, you know, because I, I considered the board goals more of our local, like our, our local control type document, you know? As the CSEP was more of a, more driven with the state requirements and stuff like that in my, in my mind. So I, I, I kind of toyed with that and I thought, well, I'm going to give Phyllis Sparks a call at MSBA, because she does all those trainings on CSEP and, and all, you know, evaluations and all that. And so I, I gave Phyllis a call and she goes, no, she's, she said, your CSEP, CSEP should is really your guiding factor, and he said, and, yeah. And so she was, she was more in favor of aligning the two and using the one guiding principle on those, so, so that, that's where I'm at on it, but I just had to do a little research on it.
Is, is the CSEP going to change a lot with MSEP six?
It's a good question. They have a drafted document that they have not shown us yet. I suspect it's going to change very little. Usually has a, you know, they, they've talked verbally, even at our workshop, our workshop meeting, MSEP six meeting, put on by their supervisor last Friday.
Yeah.
And, you know, he gave us a little hint about what would be in there. You have to have a funding source, you've had to have that, you know? So I think it'll, it'll be very, very similar to what, what the format has been in the past, but we are anxious to get the document.
Yeah. And, and Chris...
And, and can I do a whole bunch of work and then you have to redo it because?
And it is supposed to be out like any day.
Okay.
Because they, they're going to have, every district, 500 school districts are going to approve their CSEP, even if they're shelving it, they're going to approve it one time before they go with MSEP six, but I guarantee you.
Yeah.
The better, you know, the best practice is to have a more vibrant document, more living document.
Jay?
Hello?
Aaron?
I am all in favor of streamlining. I would just want to make sure that some of those goals that we have in place that, you know, maybe in board does or districts, of course, that we've identified board goals, find that's based in our CSEP goals as well, which I'm sure they will align. I just want to make sure that, you know, parent community involvement, we know that that improves student achievement, so just make sure that those are aligned out to where.
Okay. Anything else that you might want to bring up? So, what I'm hearing is, we'll get more in depth in this in July, and then we'll kind of make a, you know, provide some direction to Chris in terms of how we want to drive board goals and CSEP. So, you all have homework to, this month about thinking about it and figuring out what we want to do.
Research some schools. Aaron didn't ask that question, I thought she was going there, so I'm going to jump on it anyway because I was great to answer this. You know, sometimes maybe in the board goals, there's more of a directive for the superintendent because something you want me to do, you know. That can certainly make the CSEP, it can reflect that, but remember, I'm also evaluating on the superintendent, Missouri superintendent standards, and you can pull something out there. So, you know, Chris, more, you, more visible, there's a standard for that. You know, so if there's something like more, okay, this doesn't really move the district, this is move you, Chris, you can do that, because that's through my evaluation, it's just a separate, it is a separate tool. They should, but all those tools, you know, whether it's a PD document, CSEP, our facility guide, all those, our budget, should all connect, you know, it should all be connected.
Anything else? Okay, next item is board self-evaluation, and Chris, I'm going to let you lead this conversation, or you want me to lead?
I was not, you know, I was ready for you two, Mr. President.
Okay.
Drive.
No, 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 that's fine. So, pull up the evaluation comparison document first. So, I went through this real quick, and, and basically, I really didn't see any, unlike years past where I saw diverging questions, where, you know, we diverge on answers. So, really, I think, I think, so let's leave the community engagement to the side for a second for another conversation about that.
And that slide, I think it's a flicking slide, five and 24. Five is the new slide, 24, one kind of rhymes with it, so if you leave those two out.
Okay. So, was there anything, as you all reviewed this, that you particularly wanted to discuss in terms of the board evaluation or self-evaluation about what we need to talk about as a board? Did anything stick out to anybody? Because nothing really stuck out to me as I reviewed this. I'll give you all a second to look this over again.
You're pulling out five.
Five and 24.
Yeah, that was really the one key.
But anything else? I, I, as I perused this and looked at it, I really didn't see anything that stuck out in terms of what we really needed to discuss something as, as a group. We were all pretty much locked up when we did this. Okay. So, the next one was slide five and 24, which essentially is community engagement because we wanted, you know, to talk about this a little bit. And ironically, you know, we all, slide five, we all kind of agreed that we make an effort to engage other local patrons, you know, pretty much, so we all were kind of locked up there. But I think where we differed is, how, how should we modify that a little bit? And Heidi had a suggestion that she wanted to bring up for this.
I have tried to spend a lot of time on, after we discussed at the budget meeting, you know, different community engagement options and thoughts and things that you guys learned at the summit, and it's overwhelming. There is a lot of various different things, and so I would like to recommend that we have a subcommittee to focus on this, get more information from the community, get more information from other board members, and kind of come up with a, maybe not a full-blown plan, but enough that we have direction here as a sub-person board to then discuss it. Because I think there's way too much that, I mean, I'm overwhelmed, and this is one of my passions. So, I would really like to have a subcommittee look at this over.
Well, and then I would like to take the subcommittee information, if we decide to add this to the CSEP, could be that, then that, that would be a feeder into the CSEP. So, let's talk about that for a second. Aaron, I'll let you go first.
Okay, I'll shake your hand. My, my comment as far as the subcommittee, is that all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the idea of forming one.
I think it's a great idea. My concern is not, because this isn't necessarily a concern to somebody's mind, which is something that Barry always says, for having people serve on a committee, being ready to, you know.
I was actually taking this from the perspective is it's just two to three board members initially. Now, those two to three board members, I would expect to go out and converse and have those conversations with, you know, interested parties, but then bring a plan back, was my thought process.
And I like that. Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea because, like Heidi's saying, there's just, there's so many different perspectives, and it's overwhelming with the amount of ways of want and the privacy that we're, we're held to and, you know, on the legal standard. So, I like the idea of forming a small group of board members to research that further and bring a more narrow version of ideas.
What would be the goal of that group?
To drive a plan to support the community engagement piece of the CSEP.
Oh, okay.
In my head, to at least discuss, get out there, get the information, get all these different things. I mean, what was presented last, or a couple of weeks ago, I'm like, head blown, because it's, it's, there's a firm of community engagement where we just listen to what everybody says, and then it becomes a nightmare because certain things you can't listen to the community, right? We're trapped. So, those things, why, why do we even, I mean, not saying that we shouldn't listen, but I can't do any things there. So, that's a different engagement than, oh, I'm going to listen to you and I can possibly use that information to drive decisions.
Well, that's where, you know, that presentation I talked about, where you hit your four levels of board commitment. I mean, the first level commitment was, we're going to inform. Second level is, we're going to consult.
So, what are the plans surrounding those different things, and what type of things would fall into those different things? And then how do we load that into our, you know, make those plans that fit into our CSEP, and we say, are we doing this well, are we not doing this well? Because right now, how do we even guesstimate how well we're doing, because there are so many different types of engagement and, for different reasons, and different uses. So, I just think that all, I mean, I don't understand all of it, any of it, half of it, just looking at it is overwhelming, and I thought that, you know, having a few people focus on it for a few months might be helpful.
Michael?
Well, this is a big topic. I'm turning out opposed to the, the subcommittee. I think, and I think, when I talked about this at the workshop, I think where we, we probably got a little complacent, and I think there was some expectation from patrons when they came to the public comments, of course, that, you know, the board would respond to those comments. And I think we didn't do a very good job at saying, you know, we certainly hear you, but it's not the board, that's not the opportunity for the board to respond, but we hear all those comments. I think, I think that's the piece too, is there's an education piece as far as what are the protocols, what are the expectations? And we didn't lay that foundation, I think, for those, the patrons as they came, and that's certainly an opportunity for improvement on our part, but I think that's something that maybe the subcommittee could maybe talk about, so, you know.
Well, to me, I think community engagement, I mean, I think it's a case-by-case basis. For instance, like MSEP six, I mean, obviously, our level of commitment to the community is we're going to inform you about it. Now, versus a CSEP, our level of commitment as a board is, you know, by law, you know, we're going to involve you in this, that, you know, we're going to ask you questions, but then also, we're going to communicate back to you as a patron how we use that information. So, to me, that's, and the question is, then we need to figure out
Build that framework.
Build that framework.
So, that not only do we all understand it, but then we can share that too, because there's no reason to do this if everybody doesn't understand. But if we don't understand, then we're nowhere.
And I really think at the end of the day, everyone has the same goal in mind, is we want to educate our kids, we want to provide the best opportunities, we want to be innovative. So, I think we really all have that same goal. I don't think anybody, either up here or out in the community, has a different goal in mind. I think it's just a matter of, you know, there's, we could have probably done a better job at sharing information as far as what the expectation was, what those protocols were, and, you know, it's an area of opportunity for us for sure.
Mary?
I don't, I, I think we probably should try the, the focus group, but, you know, if we come up with a solution to this, we could need to tie it up in a boat, and we could get richer. Because it's not just a right city problem. All, all schools are going through this, you know, no matter how much information you think you're getting out there, there's still misunderstandings and, you know, things like that. So, so I hope, I hope we can find some answers and, and, you know, that this will work for us, but I think that it's just a nationwide problem.
Well, I think what I'm hoping for is this, right? So, you know, there, there is, there are individuals who would like to converse with the board and have a conversation with the board. So, there's a couple of ways you can do that. You can call, you can call 1-800-AUSTIN-JONES or MARY-GRAFORD or whatever and say, hey, I want to talk to you about, one-on-one about something. I mean, that's, that's, that's a way a community member can engage with the board. Email, you know, whatever, those are ways you communicate, engage with the board. The other thing is, but what we don't do is we don't have a, a mechanism to have a conversation as a board with, with the patrons. And I think that's the gap, because individuals were thinking they could come to a board meeting, and because City Hall did it.
Yep, discussion.
You know, had a discussion with public comments, they thought that they could come here and that we, and we would have the same protocols, which we don't, because this is a business meeting. So, the idea is, how do you engage the board in a discussion? Like, for instance, let's say I say, I think evidence-based grading is great, and then a patron might say, well, no, I don't think so. Well, the question here is, is the appropriate form of engagement is, I'm on that committee with evidence-based, and that's where that conversation needs to occur? And then, or, you know, so we, so we come up with that framework, where and how those conversations can occur with, with the board and stuff like that. And then that, then, if you publicize that, then that becomes a, okay, if I want to talk about policies, for instance, here's how, here's the engagement model that we're going to use so that you can engage with policies. Like, for instance, we had a patron ask us about a particular policy that she, she wanted upon the agenda tonight, and we communicated with that patron, and she was gracious enough to allow us just to, you know, move it to the policy committee, right? But, the question here is, but let's say a patron wants to talk to us about a policy, what's our engagement model to enable that patron to have a conversation with us, other than say, I want to put it on a board agenda and come talk about public comments?
And may, may I insert in there, because this, this is a little bit on top of what Heidi said there, is it was overwhelming as I first saw that, all that information that I had sent to the workshop, and then I had to kind of work through it, and part of that work, working through it was kind of getting it on paper and building my own framework. So, what you just talked about would be in the front, in the, of those four categories of collaboration.
Yeah.
So, you know, you've got this issue, and, and we do want to collaborate with you, so where do we send that person? Whether it be policy committee, or study groups, or the CSEP committee? And I, I tried to take all the things that we were doing in the school and kind of categorize those, just to put it in a framework for me, and that's, that's, again, the collaborative, collaborative one. There was involve, there was consult, and there was inform. Inform is one way. Direct, well, yeah, even though we do a lot of those things in the, in the, in the inform, and that's board meetings, PR, title meetings, IC glass, can we do those better even? I think so. You know, there's always room for improvement. But those aren't opportunities to collaborate, those aren't opportunities for you to, you know, change the, I guess, the top process of the decision-making. That's at a different level, and like I said, I think that group may be able to work out of that framework and push that over to the CSEP. Heidi, on your thought of that, did I, I got a little lost on, did you say that it would be just board members, or would it be two or three board members?
I initially thought board members that would then take that opportunity to circle back with staffs, or, well, board members and yourself, I mean, hello.
Get out of our lives.
But I'm open to anything, I just don't think that this is something that we, as a seven-member board, can comprehend and have the time to discuss and focus on to create a framework. I think that's way bigger than
And then, my last question, I began to get in there before I was a couple of board members, but I wanted to clarify also, if they did, and if the board was agreeable, certainly that, that framework made an impression on Michael and, and Austin. If the board was agreeable, then we would charge that group, whether it's three board members or three plus five, whatever it is, that, you know, we would like to work in this framework. So, you're going to have to really commit to understanding this, not just hearing it at a board meeting, or, and I know you, you guys read it and get it in advance, but it's kind of being, I'm not even opposed to saying if we couldn't get, did, who did that presentation?
Tilly.
Janice.
Oh, Janet, yeah. Janet could, or perhaps we can even get Janet to, to do a workshop with that smaller group and say, here's what we were thinking. And she's got to change a little because this is then go to the CSEP. So, we just, we're going to kind of create the framework and push it on. So, that might be a
But I might think she pulled it from the Illinois Association of School Boards. So, they're the ones, so she just plays her I D R M.
It's not Arkansas, it's World.
But she, she presented it good.
So, okay, so the next question, okay, let's say we form this, let's say we do this committee idea, so who's going to send this committee? Heidi? Who, who else is going to volunteer for this committee? Mary?
You're just, are you, have a people volunteering forces?
No.
Sounds like a volunteer.
Aaron, Michael, I don't know. Who, okay, who's volunteering for the committee?
You know, I think it's an opportunity that we have as a board, and that's why I'm happy to serve on that committee as much as I'm able to.
I can serve on it.
I would serve on it often.
Hey, I'm going to have three of you.
There you go, you got three.
So, the three are Heidi, Aaron, and Mary?
Well, Michael got froze out.
Well, that was
I did, I did something all over again.
Well, question, well, no, question, well, Aaron just volunteered.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, but Heidi did, right?
Heidi volunteered.
Oh, no, I really, yeah, okay.
Heidi volunteered.
Heidi volunteered like 17 weeks ago when I came up with this. Not that one.
Okay, so the question is then
I'm happy to bow out.
Yeah, it was Heidi, Michael.
Okay. Aaron says she's happy to bow out.
Okay, Mary got it.
And if Aaron is really committed to it, I'm happy, it really doesn't give him a matter. I think you just have to, I think this is an important topic, and I think if all those three of us serve.
Okay, now, the other thing is you all, from a legal perspective, do they have to post meetings?
And they would if they chartered, if it's chartered by the board, they would.
So, are we chartering this by the board from a legal perspective?
It sounds like it's in that direction, but I'm
Okay, so, so you all have to post meeting times, and, and then, you know, and tell Chris, and so he can get something posted, so if someone wants to come listen, you know, to your conversation.
One of us would happen not to be able to serve, could Aaron be the alternate?
Absolutely.
You know, if one of us couldn't make it on that particular night, then Aaron
Just don't have four board members there.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, I need a motion and a second to charter the community engagement sub, board subgroup with Mary, Heidi, and Michael, and with Aaron as a substitute. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion again.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Did someone say no?
I did.
Yep, I did.
I'm sorry, David, I should have asked before we had the conversation, why you didn't think it's a good idea?
Number one, I can't wrap my head around it. I think that you're chasing the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow with trying to come up with a consensus to make everybody happy. You know, you talked about having discussion, and, and I get discussion, but I, I just don't see how one person can speak for a seven-member board. I don't see how you can answer somebody's question.
I can't speak, as an individual, I can't speak for a seven-person board.
That's what I mean. So you're talking about being collaborative. How, how are you going to be collaborative?
I think there's, this group is supposed to think about.
I understand that, and I'm just telling you, sitting here right now, I can't get my head around it. I have no idea how this is going to happen, and I'm not a huge fan of it.
I'm sorry.
The one problem I see with it, and I'm just going to throw it out there, is some people are not happy unless they get their way. And they think that we're not listening if they don't get their way. And so that creates a problem, you know? That's, that's just nature. That's just human nature. That's just the way it is. So, so I, I'm, I'm trying to figure, how do you work around this? How do you, you can't make everybody happy.
Well, again, so when individuals bring an individual situation to the board, and, and, you know, you know, be it a bully situation or whatever, that's an operational issue. Now, the board sometimes has to adjudicate that once it goes through, you know, chain command. But originally, you know, those are all operational. These are more strategic decisions that we're trying to make here in terms of being able to say, okay, here's, because the framework is strategic, right? And by definition, strategic. It's a strategic framework that says, how are, how are you going to at least attempt to better engage the community? And so that's, you know, and then that's the purview of the board. Does that help?
No, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
And I, and I just think, you know, like, like Mary always says, is if you ask for people's opinion and they give it to you, you know, I, and it's, I'm going to be hard convinced to, to go with something because I'm going to have a hard time seeing it work.
Well, and I'm, and you may be right, you may be absolutely right. We might get together and be like, I don't really know what the best framework is. But I think, I just feel like, me personally, I think we have to go through the practice because what we've done in the past is not working well. So I think we have to at least go through the practice to say, okay, let's, let's reexamine where our current processes and practices are. And if we can't determine if there's anything better, then come back and say, you know what, we looked at a variety of things and it just didn't make sense. I don't know, I just.
But I guess my question then to you, Michael, is how do you determine what's working well and not working well?
Well, that's, that's a fair point. I mean, I think what we're doing now isn't. I think we, I think, you know, I think we've got a, you know, contingent of our community that doesn't feel necessarily engaged. And I don't, I don't know. I don't think there is a magic bullet that we're going to do one thing and all of a sudden, everything's going to be sunshine and rainbows. I, I certainly don't agree with that. I just, I feel like I cannot, if a board member, not do anything and expect things to change. I think that's where I'm at. And maybe this isn't the solution, maybe this isn't the right idea, but I think it's, it's a start. You know, and it's, it's a commitment on my time. I can at least have the conversation and see what happens.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the subcommittee comes back and we all go, well, that was a waste of time, but attempting it can't be a bad thing.
Sure. And I, and I agree with you, Mary, too. I mean, we're certainly not going to make everyone happy. That's leadership. I mean, in my job, there's many decisions I make that there's always a contingent that I'm not making it happy at every moment in time. I mean, you know, you're a business owner. I'm sure there's people that work for you that are like, he is crazy. Why did you do that? But that's just the bricks of the game. You know, I, I took on this role and I realized that there's things that I say and the things that I do, or votes that I take, that there's a contingent out there that's certainly not going to be happy about it. And my goal isn't to make everyone happy. I mean, I'm Michael, that's never going to happen in anything that I do. I just think you have to examine where our current processes are and determine if what we're doing is, the only thing we can do is the best practice, or if there's something else we can throw in there. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. But I, you know, I certainly respect your opinion. And you may be right, you may be right. I may be wasting my time.
I hope you're not. I really hope you're not.
Okay, so I made a mistake. I took the vote prematurely.
No, no, you're, I didn't ask for any more discussion. That's fine. I'm, I'm okay without the vote turned out.
Okay, okay. Well, I didn't know if you might want to change your vote based on the conversation that was going on. So, so we all, we all okay with a six-one vote? Okay. And I apologize, Dave, for not.
That's fine, I'll send it back.
All right. You know how I speak up. Fair enough. All right. Anything else on the board evaluation? Okay, the advocacy positions. I went through these. I read the document very closely. And I didn't see anything in here that I think as a board of education, we want to change or propose changes to. Did, so I'm not going to go through it line by line unless someone wants to go through it line by line. So does, was there anything that anybody saw in this document that they felt compelled to, the Board of Education, to submit the form to get it changed?
I was fine with that.
Austin, the only thing that I thought of was, um, what is the, the percentage of bonding to pay off big deals? Sorry, I can't.
Okay.
We talked about before.
Yeah, the advocacy position says up to twenty percent from fifteen percent.
Says to increase.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so it's, um, I specifically read that, and the advocacy position says to go from fifteen percent to twenty percent. Chris is looking it up real quick on the screen.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anything else stuck out to me.
Unless you want to go a higher percentage, I don't think you want to do.
Page ten, actually. But it says two at the bottom.
Well, let's, let's just pull it up. Let's just find it here real quick, since you brought it.
So it's on page ten, but it says page two at the bottom of it. Keep going, ten, right there. Nine, go up one more.
One more page, Chris.
Nope, the other direction. Sorry.
There it is, there it is. General obligation.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, E, there it is.
Yeah, so talk about going from to come twenty percent. Yeah, because it doesn't say anything about fifteen percent yet. So. Yeah, so, yeah, that's there, and so I think we're good. Okay, anything else that anybody would, I would like to talk about? Other than that, I want to keep my mouth shut at the delegate assembly unless people come. You know I can't do that, really. Unless I sit next to my crap and he keeps me in line. All right. Anything else on the advocacy positions? Okay, Dr. Berger, the food service board report?
Yeah, I want to have Amy open that up and, and kind of speak here, a couple of things from Glenn. Down at the bottom, Amy, I think, uh, this, right there where it's highlighted, the recommendations do require an increase in our meal prices. And by the way, I got clarity from Glenn on this today. We put that through a calculator provided by DESI, and it calls for a dollar increase, but they do allow us to incrementally go up. And that's a game that most districts do. So we're, we're calling out that ten cents. And we are still going to hold to that, even though we did get information today from, from DESI that there is a bipartisan legislation that they, that will help in the reimbursement rates. Uh, because we are going off of the seamless summer program, which would allow all kids to be on free reduced lunch and then go back to the traditional program. There was a little discussion about extending that. It's not going to, it doesn't appear. The best recommendation we have, which is even an email thing, that is not going to happen. But they are getting increased reimbursement rates. It is part of this package that's being considered. So if that does have an impact on the calculator, we'll come back to the board and, and maybe not do that increase. But right now, it looks like inevitably, we're going to need to increase, which will still keep us below the DESI recommended rate by, by almost a dollar. And then the second thing is on the changes made, follow-up from latest evaluation. That first point Glenn and I have had conversations about, getting back out there to the advisory board. You know, there are just a lot of things that I've had conversations with individual board members on, and I've turned to kind of flip the switch, you know? We are not post-COVID completely, but we are post-COVID, I'll say. And I think everybody knows why I'm meaning to say that. And vaccinations are available for anybody who wants one. So we really are going into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year thinking, we're flipping the switch. You know, let's get people back in the school, whether it's volunteers, whether it's pulling our, our patrons together, mainly kids in this case, on the advisory board to get feedback on meal programs. So, asking for approval on that.
The federal government hasn't lightened up on their, um, their requirement, nutrition requirements because I just see so much waste.
Yeah, no. No, I think, but anecdotally speaking, I think we've, we've adjusted to it a little bit, uh, probably through practice, but also from what we are putting in front of kids, you know, and so, again, very anecdotal. But if we're putting wheat-based products in front of kids, and first of all, that, they just turn their nose at it. I think now it's becoming a little more norm for our kids. So I think the waste is less. But certainly that was, you know, back to the, what, I'm trying to think. I'm wanting to say no kid hungry, but that's close. Something like that. Don't kid them up behind them. But there was some pushback during that time. I think that's eased a little bit as time's gone on.
Well, you know, I, I kind of go back to when I was at school with my lunch buddy.
Yeah.
Haven't picked that back up. Hopefully it'll pick up back up next year. But, uh, you know, and they served them black-eyed peas.
And it wasn't New Year's Day?
So anyway, I saw all the black-eyed peas going in the trash.
Probably commodities. We get fossil commodities at either free or new straight. And we do utilize those to make it, you know, to keep the cost down. And sometimes they're not, not received either.
Okay, any more discussion on the food service evaluation? Okay, I need a motion to increase full, oh, I'm sorry, Aaron.
Oh, that's right. Um, well, since prices are going up and we haven't had a free lunch in two years, do we have a plan yet in place to, and forgive me if this is something that we normally do and I've just forgotten about it, but what is our plan to communicate this with parents before school starts so that, um, they have their free and reduced lunch application in and ready to go so nobody got sticker shop when they come to school? And it's nearly three dollars for a lunch?
Yeah, I, I tell you, what I'm taking note of there is we need to have a plan, Aaron, to your point. So Amy can speak to some of the preparations that she's thinking.
Effective tomorrow, July one, we will get the updated forms, free and reduced forms that we will send to our families. However, Glenn has let me know that there is a grace period until October. If you previously received free or reduced lunch, you will receive those until October, and then we will have to have the new form. So we do kind of have the ball rolling and we start, we'll start rolling that out pretty quickly.
A good reminder, though, we need to ramp up that.
Basically, can utilize our, our, um, text messaging service just and, and put out what the prices are going to be? Like, you know, hey, heads up, lunch next year for, for a second grader is going to be two dollars and sixty-five cents. Here's the link to fill out your free and reduced lunch application. Uh, I think, you know, those text messages, I don't know what the response rate is, but I, I know I respond to those, or they grab my eye more than an email does. Um, so if we can utilize that, we put some sticker shop in there to drive people to action, would be great.
Can do, you bet.
Anybody else? I need a motion to increase full-paid breakfast and lunch meal prices for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Breakfast, two dollars and five cents, all buildings. Lunch, K five, two sixty-five, and six twelve, two ninety-five. Adult lunch is three seventy-five, and a breakfast is two fifty.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Okay, budget amendment number three. Chris?
Yeah, just kind of a little off agenda. Uh, I will say that this is Ms. Fox's final agenda, or agenda? A budget that she's creating. Uh, so while moving into that in, in upcoming agenda items, but as she kind of runs point on our budget amendments here, I wanted to bring that up. So we had a nice lunch together today to celebrate her, and actually brought Donna back too, and then identified a few others in the crowd that were thinking about retiring, motivated by these. So with Amy, we, we shared some stories today. But congratulations, I know you wanted that opportunity to, to see Connie again. And, and I know you'll see her again, but maybe not in this capacity.
Congratulations.
Best wishes.
Thank you.
I always mention that, you know, we do as good a job as anything, anywhere I've ever been, anything I've ever seen in terms of she does a wonderful job of, on her explanations. But certainly, are there any questions to any of the budget amendments as we kind of close out FY twenty-two? This action right here with amendment three, and then the action in the consent agenda of moving all revenues and expenditures to actual, don't put the nail in the coffin, the last nail in the coffin, but it starts, starts that work of closing up FY twenty-two.
Okay, any questions on the amendment, budget amendment number three? Here, Aaron, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, guys, for all your service. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the twenty-two budget. Amendment number three is presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is the actual budget. Chris?
Yeah, we'll take a little bit of information from that budget amendment, bring that over to the budget, the FY twenty-three budget. And so, if you pull that final presentation and then work me through that, there's eighteen slides. Some are redundant from last time, but I'll try to point out something new from the budget workshop. And then there are a couple of new ones. Uh, so you can go on to this slide two, talk about our budget goals. Of course, for this, uh, for, for, uh, budget, uh, in this environment particularly, the competitive salary schedules and quality benefit package, I think we've done a pretty good job for our non-reassessment year. Next is the time, uh, kind of the timetable for, for work through that process. This is a new slide. And so I kind of like to look at this as, like, if I had never seen Wright City, I've done that with you guys before, and I looked at this. And I did a quick analysis, not as thorough as, as I did during the budget workshop. But I would look down there and say, okay, FY twenty-two, the year they're closing is, they're in good shape financially because thirty-five percent is well above the district, I wouldn't maybe know that, of goal of twenty-two percent. But also thirty-five percent for virtually any district is really in just real, really good financial standing in operations. Uh, fund three would not interest me, even as a little bit of, as a superintendent, because it might interest me to what the levy was. It'd be more interesting, I might look at the, the any balances to see how close they were to going back out for, for new money, for a no-tax increase. But really, I've told you repetitively, fund three takes care of itself. When we set the tax rate in August, uh, and then we'll, we'll make a couple of interest payments and a principal payment out, fund three, and it's low maintenance. The fund four would, would, I would have to take pause as I looked at this slide. As I go, ooh, something's going on, because this is a new slide for you guys. Look down there at the FY twenty-two estimated any balances. I would quickly, I think quickly conclude, they passed a bond issue or something. Because they've got a lot of, of, uh, the revenue and a lot of any balance there. And of course, you know that picture, so that's where our cell of our general obligation bonds is reflected there in that thirty-nine million. So, but if I was digging down as a board member and certainly as superintendent, as I did with Connie, as, as she messed up my slide because it gets a little, it gets a little abstract now. What's the number if you take away the bond issue, all the proceeds from the bond issue? You can pretty much take away about thirty-seven million. So that would leave you in a balance of about two point one. So that's what we're looking at, which is right on track before we did send our previous budget amendments. And, and it's really guys in, in a good position moving forward, particularly going into a large project where there might be some things that don't make the project, but the district might be able to take and consider those aside from projects. So. Now let's close out FY twenty-two, so move on. Another redundant slide where our revenue comes from. Again, I made that point, this is non, it's forty percent of our revenue approximately come from local and projected that more and more will come from local as Wright City grows. This is a non-reassessment year, and we're able to be fairly aggressive with salaries this year, as you'll see. Next slide is also pretty much the same as last time. Let me see, I want the number there on the first bullet. Current taxes are projected to increase five percent, so I think I have a range of forty-seven percent. So that kind of gives you a tell of how aggressive we were in terms of revenue. Not overly aggressive. But somewhere about middle of the road, we could do better than five percent. Five percent's pretty safe. State, we, nothing, you know, career ladder, we have not received anything from DESI on the career ladder. Just remember, when we reconsider that, it would be a maximum of $152,000 per our projection for the district. It will be something less than that, that's the max it could be with, with what we know, which is really very little, but we know there's money allocated for the career ladder, we can only look back on what it used to be, and we'll probably reconvene a committee at, you know, the district level staff, if not just reconvene the salary committee when we go and dig into that and try to bring recommendations to board if we do. Federal programs, we'll talk a little bit about this for three in just a minute on upcoming slide. All right, this is slide, I've condensed like the five slides I gave you guys in the budget workshop to one, really to this summary. And really, you know, you put the, the tax levy as the, the community has given us the authority to have more flexibility with our debt service, but you can put the tax levy wherever you want and whatever fund with some constraints, but what the board from that $30,000 view and certainly you can ask any questions that drill down. The, the number I would be concerned about is at 4.45, that's the number that can't change. So the, the patrons give us the authority to lower the, to lower the debt service, increase the operations, and then of course with the ESR plan, we've really blown this thing up. This really does not look like our historical tax levy from pre-2022. Right now, the budget is actually built on 90 cents in capital projects, but that was just, Connie projected that to be 90 cents because she wanted a little more tax levy in there to make sure we capture what is an approximately $1.8 million in ESR dollars.
Why does it say 99?
No, look down at the, I'm sorry, capital project.
Eighty-one.
Yeah, eighty-one, yeah, so taken from the general thought. But, but again, we won't even set the tax rate, remember, until August. So something, I bet Connie's projection of 90 cents is going to be closer than my eighty-one, I'll always bet on Connie. But she, even, we both know, when we get the assessed values from the county, if, let's say that it's, there's double-digit increases on a non-reassessment year. Could happen, not, I won't say likely, could happen in Warren County, Lincoln County. If that happened, then we may roll that back, want to push that in, and then that'd be reflected in our budget now. So in August, we change the tax levy, and then the next budget amendment after that, we would reflect that in the budget. So the key is 4.45. All right, next slide. And then I was going to point something out a little differently on this, well, you know, I mentioned notices on weighted ADA, sort of. They say that was a target, dollar, now you modify it, the local, and you subtract out the local effort, and that gives you the state funding. I may have to confirm this with Connie in further confirmation of it. This budget is based on the pre-COVID ADA, Connie, you recall? She loves to run one side of the questions.
Yes.
It is, I thought it was. There is a small chance that we did not face that, so there's, there's, you know, a little bit of, I don't, we're not betting on it, we didn't feel like we needed to, you know? But there's, there's some chance of that. And then again, the state funding, the transportation being funded for the first time since ninety-one, that alone was a $500,000 increase for our district.
So be used to it.
And don't use it, right? But, you know, then again, I think that's debatable, as we talked about last budget, but yes, we don't want to bank on that, so to speak. But I, if I was hedging my bets today, and that's not, you know, contemplating a future recession or correction, I would say that the, it won't be fully funded, but they're going to be closer to fully funded than they have treated us in the past years because I think the budget appropriations chairperson has some skin in the game. That's centered up at Springfield, and so I think it's going to be, we're going to try to put money there for at least the foreseeable future, especially if the state stays so flush with money. Next slide, I'm doing all this seated to keep me on pace here. We looked at this last, last budget workshop, that's the same information, nothing's changed, that gives you some approximate numbers for the 20% learning loss. I will remind you, though, we plan on exceeding the 20%, and that's okay. In fact, if we go into 2023, we may like something so much that we come back to the board and say, let's keep something, you know, I mean. It won't be out of ESR monies, it'll be out of local dollars, but we really think these items give us the biggest bang for our buck, and we think we're going to see that in our, what we, what we think we're seeing in our EOC scores already, and what we're going to see when we get our MAP results back later in the fall. Next slide, please, and, and questions, guys, just as we go, please. I like this slide because it just is a good reminder that once you set your salaries and your benefits, you know, renewal will come in. A lot of your operations budget is, is already done, there's a lot of work for, for Connie and Veronica, but that's, that's set, you know? And we're, you know, pretty late in the game with those recommendations, that's not because of the volatility of the state, but, next slide. And those numbers came in, so what I'm recommending tonight, we're looking at a $568,000 increase in salaries. I'll detail that in the upcoming slide here, and that old information from last meeting. Our insurance premiums actually went down, same benefit plan went down. I've only experienced that one at the top of my entire career, and in fact, I remember a 36% renewal, it gives me nine, nine meters. And, you know, it's just crazy, double digits more, more than single digits. Whether, unless you're going to revise your plan, you know, unless you're going to larger plan, and unfortunately, that's what we're going to do. This next slide, I'm going to let you digest, because this is something that we've talked about several times, we kind of alluded to it, but we really don't know. So this slide caught me, where is our staff at?
Are you asking those?
No, you see, I, yeah, I think it's rhetorical. Not being, my point, where is our, our staff? But obviously, you see where our staff is, they're early in their career, which this, this definitely supports some of the conversation, certainly that's in the board goals that could make the C SIP, I think it's likely. And it kind of, you know, to what Mary mentioned earlier, but it, it's not a Wright City matter. You know, this is what everybody is battling now, we can battle it and be better than everybody else, particularly those closeness. We've got to get ahead of them. But, but certainly, everybody is faced with this challenge of teacher retention, and you can see there, our teachers are all on the front end. You can also, there's lots of ponderers that can come from this, you can say, well, the strategy that likely was in place to keep the front heavy is working because we're recruiting teachers, and yes, then you, you might make the, the counterpoint that, that are they looking around, you know, to find better financial opportunities on the back end of our competitive salary schedules. And you'll get more information from that from next in July, when we do our exit, exit interview data that Dr. Way will be presenting. Next slide, reminder of what we did last year, so last year, to my knowledge, and you know, that was working with the salary committee, was the first time that we ever, you know, kind of did something specifically to the back. I turned that being surgical, where we said, okay, we're not just going to put something applied to the base, let's get surgical and, and see where we need more help than, than, than just doing something to the base. And then the recommendation for this year, and I should have mentioned as I started this brief presentation, that of course, if there was a hesitancy on the budget, you know, and, and Dave pointed out, or Heidi pointed out, I said, I'm not comfortable with 4%, I don't want to talk about that. The budget could be approved, and the salary schedules are going to come up as a, as a separate agenda item, and we would address that then. But right, as this budget is written, and as you'll see in my recommendation forthcoming year on a future agenda item, I'm recommending 4% to base salary administration, and then market value, we looked at those comps last meeting on the health department, which was, you know. That department has had more comp activity in the superintendent circle than any department we have. There was another solicitation of comps that came out this week, and so it may be something we're revisiting sooner than later, but, oh, yeah.
How do you figure your vertical horizontal movement, where do you have that work coming from?
Static from current staffing. So we take everybody who's currently staffed and assume, we take an average of what we, what we've seen historically and what they've moved horizontally on the salary schedule, and then of course, we know they're all going to move vertically. It does not account for who left and who came in. So it's a little, as we talked a little bit last, last month.
It's just an add.
It, yes, it is, it is, and so that builds us in a little bit of padding for our projection, because we know on a certain year, and certainly this year would be one of them, that we're going to gain financially because we're going to have a lot of teachers leave, and we're going to hire teachers that are earlier on the salary schedule. So it does provide me a little protection whenever we're, we're, we're trying to create the projection, make the recommendations. And then again, for the second year in a row, we're going to look at the back of the schedule and say, okay, we're going to do 4% to the base, 1% last year, 4% this year, and we're going to, at year 20, add $500 to every cell, which is about 1% at that 20-year mark and over, in an effort to try to keep some of those folks looking forward to that 20th year and potentially recruit to that too. Give a little pause on that slide, move on, and same slide, nothing new from the capital expenditure schedule. I am not making recommendations for the capital reserve from the slide last month. I'm going to wait until later in the fall to potentially do that, and I think probably after bids come out, if, if, you know, if we're in October, after we see the bids, but so then I may have about $500,000 worth of things I'd like the board to consider, but that is not in this budget, to be clear, it is not. Next slide, please, this only addresses the 1967 and 2025 payments. We have QZABS in existence, and we also have a 2015 issue out there that we also pay principal and interest on. But this is the principal and interest schedule for 67 and 2025. And we're the only ones that call it that, that the, you know, Stiefel doesn't call it that, or that, but they, but it's easier for us to, for us, particularly for our patrons. Okay, so the last slide, so where does that bring us? If everything worked out, from the budget being approved tonight till June 30th, 2023, this is where we will be. Let me tell you, it will not be like this, it will change. I don't, right now, we're looking at tea leaves, we don't think it's going, we don't predict it to change radically, but it's starting to change. So you can see in operations, we've got a deficit of $186,000, that doesn't concern me for variety reasons, I think we've got enough padding in the budget. While I'm still optimistic that we'll, we'll make that a black number. Also, an example of, of the percent of assessed value growth, you know, we could have caught that if I wanted to be more, more aggressive in, in that projection, but I feel pretty comfortable with that, and certainly, every budget amendment, we get closer to the end, the story starts to firm up. Again, fund three takes care of itself, we'll, we'll address that again in August. Fund four is another interesting number, we go at, at 36 million, because what Connie has done there in expenses is only has the architect fees essentially out there and other expenditures, you know, that would be routine. So, you know, in October, when we get, when we go to bid, and we go get our first payer request, we may have a two and a half billion dollar, three billion dollar check go out, we just don't know what that looks like. We should know by budget amendment two, and of course, every time we send that money out, that $36 million is going to go down. So how much money are we going to put out from October till June? I'm not going to guess because we're now filming and someone will call me on it. There's no need to guess because we'll soon have drawn payment schedule and we'll, we'll be able to reflect that in the budget. One other note, if, so remember, though, the, the drill down question, maybe even if that, that budget summary might be, okay, Chris, I get that, that there's a lot of money in there because that's the revenues from the bond proceedings, but what would we think if we took all of that out and you did that ESR thing again, what do we think fund four is going to look like? We, we would project that if we subtracted out the, the bond proceeds, to be just under $4 million, maybe about 3.8. But remember, what we're doing is, we're using the most general allowance we can for ESR three, continuation of services. We're using that to supplement salaries, and then we're running extra levy on fund four to get money into fund four. A more drill down question is, okay, Chris, we're going to use that money for fund four, you know, you're putting that money, basically doing a, a switch to get that money into fund four. Is there an allowance for ESR for a fund four expenditure? There is. However, the negative that is, we don't have a plan for fund four yet, right? So we don't know what that is, and the ESR money is on a timeline, so we cut that time constraint thing. The other negative is, then we have to go through federal regulations bidding because it's federal money. We've just turned that federal money into local money, which there's not an inordinate amount of difference, but there is some differences. And so makes it a little easier for us. Now, potentially, we still have a project identified yet, so there are school districts, rightly so, that say, okay, we need to expand our cafeteria or whatever, and you can do that, but there's a little more red tape to it. We don't have the plan, we'd like to wait and see what we can capture with proposition 6725, and then, and then make a better decision about that, and then also streamline the bidding process. And that's it, 18 slides.
You still have the same ending percent, though, 35.
The 32% there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to be right, right, no, that's right, yeah, right around that ballpark, so we're closing out 22 at 35, and because we're deficit spending to this projection, a couple hundred thousand dollars, it'll drop those reserves.
The 32.
Yeah, but really, I can tell you with a great deal of confidence, whatever we need that percentage to be, now, obviously, the board's radar goes, your radar's on. More than your radar, the whip comes out if we get to 22%, right? But we're going to be able to make that number where we need it, it'll, it'll be at the cost of the 1.8 million, you know, but if we need to keep a little more there because, let's say, by budget amendment two or budget amendment three, it looks more, more confident about going into a recession, or maybe we have information of deep recession, we may want to hold, putting that money in fund four and keeping it in our balances of operations, but we'll have the flexibility. Since 2007, with the new, with Senate Bill 287, there is a great deal more flexibility than there was on old deal with Senate Bill 380, so one benefit of formula changing, and a lot of negatives to it, too, that's one benefit. We'll be able to hit our target, whatever that target is.
Any questions, Erin?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I have no additional questions. Alice?
No, I'm okay.
I don't have any other.
No, not here, no.
I'm good, thank you.
Oh, I did have a question, I lied. Fuel cost.
Oh, God, yeah.
We probably didn't project it high enough, I know Connie marched over it a couple, three times, and, you know.
Well, I, I, I know, I know.
Whatever I gave her was a little low, probably a little lower than what she wanted. What, you'll find.
It was $6.
$6, she, oh, she's not talking.
So, so we're estimating diesel is going to go $6 now?
Well, average between the fuel, between gas and diesel, we just said $6 across the board, so.
But that, that's a good example of how finite it is, now, not every, not every line item, because sometimes we're looking at three years before we need to adjust the line item, but certainly fuel was, everybody knows, and a board member's going to ask. And so we want to be able to, you know, say we addressed that, obviously, but, but honestly, you know, on a, on a, maybe a normal year where that's not an issue, that will be a number we just carry over, we don't go back into an average of gallons consumed. We say, did we have enough money last year, we were in 3%, that's going to work again, you know? But on that one, we do.
Well, I think the other thing, didn't Glenn have issues with commodity prices for food?
Yeah, I did talk to him, though, and he said it's coming back down a little bit.
So we're, we're good there?
Yes. For now.
All right, I'm sorry, I had those two questions. Anything else? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the FY '23 budget as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seven zero. Okay, salary schedules.
Yeah, there's no presentation here, but if you need a point of reference, you can keep on your board docs the slide of my recommendation. It's also written out in the recommended action, and again, I'm, I'm pretty excited about this, because I think this is a, a pretty significant move. Although, I'll tell you, what, St. Louis Public Schools, with the largest increase, they've known to be the best paying school district in the state, at least as they, when they approved it. Now somebody may want to beat them, but there's going to be some people that be, you know, that are aggressive. I think for a non-reassessment with our demographic, this is a pretty aggressive year, but, but look, we have reserves, you know? Everything is pointing towards growth in Warren County, even if we do go into recession. Our assessed value is, is projected with, with a large level of confidence to, to continue to grow, it may really pop in 2024. I feel really comfortable in this recommendation, and, and I tell you, our people, we got, we need teacher retention, teacher recruitment, we got to have it. And so let's keep our people and go recruit the best, and so I'm tickled to death to bring that, that recommendation, and thank, thanks full for the committee's work in helping me get here.
So I had, Chris, attached the 22 schedule, because I, what I want people to do is I really want people to go out and look at what we were paying last year versus what we're going to pay this year, and, and note that, you know, as a, as a district, you know, given that 80% of our. and, and note that, you know, as a, as a district, you know, given that eighty percent of our expenses are salary and stuff like that, that we're, we're really trying to ensure that our educators and our staff, uh, have livable wages. So I think that's, you know, that's something we need to, uh, toot our horns on a little bit, is that, you know, we, we, we're doing, we're doing the best we can with, with the finite amount of resources that we have to, to pay our individuals. So, any questions on the salary schedule for Chris? So I need a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three salary schedules, vertical, horizontal movement, four percent to the base schedules and administration. Market value, I'm going to question that administration one here in a second. Market value increases to the health department, four per hour, and additional five hundred for the twenty-plus year of certified schedule. Don't we have in, uh, closed session, if we want to do the administrator salaries?
Informational.
Oh, that was informational?
Yeah.
Because I saw that in, I thought we, so we're not going to, there's no vote in the closed session?
It's public.
It's public record, okay. So that's the, the motion on the board there is what we need, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any more discussion on the salary schedule? Our own motion.
Dave, was that your second?
It can be, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven zero. Consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Is anybody related to anybody in the employment section?
Can I ask a quick question about employment?
Yes, you may. Let's just pull it.
Yeah, let's pull it real fast.
Okay, we're pulling employment. Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, I, uh, sans item D.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda, sans item D. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Question on item D?
Uh, Michelle Payton says new hires, but her previous district was here.
Yeah.
She is, um, going from a teacher to a counselor.
Okay, and then, uh, extra duty, extended days. What is the position for, um, Ms. Wilkins?
Uh, multiple ever.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need to know.
Okay, any more discussion on the employment? Okay, I need a motion to approve item D?
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. I need new glasses.
I do, too.
Well, I, I have computer glasses.
I do, too.
But I don't bring them here. Okay, in, uh, in accordance with the section six ten oh twenty-one, the advice statute of Missouri, the R two Board of Education will meet in closed session to discuss. Six ten oh twenty-one, three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employees by a public government or body, and personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings to records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Fourteen, records which are protected from disclosure by law. Need a motion to go in the closed session?
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? Roll call, strength with Austin, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Erin? Okay.